You know what, Joe, I think you should be the most good sometime. You look like a good.
Well, sixty-eight years old, I wouldn't have much time to be one.
That's all right.
And they cut you off at seven too.
They do?
Two full pages, Jack? Come on now.
Well.
I've never seen it been magenta like this. You know, I was mayor, it was a half page.
That's right. Well, we're doing a little more stuff now.
Yeah, we are.
So it takes a little more words to say or talk about it. And if I don't have enough words to fill it, then I can always depend on Mr. Culpepper to fill in the gaps for us.
Yeah, absolutely.
I don't have any, I don't have any reason.
How you doing, Ray?
Yeah, we have three of them.
You're wearing yourself two, aren't you?
We don't have any.
Now I brought all you want. There you go.
Thank you.
I didn't say any names up here. Really, how's him with us?
You can have heart. You can just.
I just got food and I want to fix some food before I leave. She wouldn't let me leave till I ate.
My husband don't fix my dinner.
He could have had a picture.
But you're welcome. And that's the biggest pile.
Jesus. Hot dish. Bob didn't say that.
All right. Ready for your event? So.
There is quite a few here.
What are they all here for?
That's what I was thinking. I was like, wow, all right.
Probably yell at us because we've got zoning in here again.
One of them buzzwords. They're AI on there. They'll get some other people.
How are you, Robbie?
I'm good. Just trying to settle. Take off this and put on the next one. Trying to learn from David how he does it.
Just show up and dust your can with what you got, where you're at.
He just has one thing that he carries on his mouth.
Phone track?
We're not going to talk about that.
Outdoor rec. Why are we having a phone track?
No.
The skateboard is bigger than better than you ever thought it was going to be.
Right, but we need Alvin. We can use stuff on Alvin. Well, it's, it's the right thing. Something that we needed to add. Oh, and so that we know we're up. We follow the rules. No, I don't think.
Looking for a phone track with two hundred and fifty grams. It helps kids forever.
David.
You lost one ounce, I love.
Well, that'd be nice. That helps some kids out.
One kid.
Who you missed out on? How many do you got?
I got two. Because I know my limits and what I can afford. Do my best.
Yeah, we used to have one. I'm good.
We used to all have one, but.
I think it clocks maybe a minute.
There is, there is. It's a nice blue.
Look at that.
We'll call the meeting to order. Thank you all for being here. If you would, please rise and we'll ask our Vice Mayor, Mr. Guffey, if you would, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Every boys, everybody's got a copy of the agenda for tonight's meeting and you've had a chance to look at that. Is there a motion concerning adoption of tonight's town council agenda? We have a motion to approve the agenda. Is there a second? We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all was in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Unanimous? We also have the consent agenda. You've had a chance to look at it. Is there any item on the consent agenda that any of the board members would like to pull for further discussion? Or is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as included in your packet? You have a motion?
Yep.
To approve the consent?
To approve as included in our packet.
Okay. Is there a second? Thank you. We have a motion, a second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all was in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. Posed by like son, that motion carries. At this time, we'd like to have some recognitions and I'd like to ask Chief Devin Holland, if you would come forward.
Good evening, Mayor Kelp. And I'd like to introduce to you Sergeant Gary Hobus. Sergeant, he was promoted to Sergeant December first of twenty twenty-three. I was supposed to introduce him in our last meeting, but he was working and had a call. He had to work. But Officer Hobus, Sergeant Hobus has demonstrated efforts and proven himself that he's a desire to be in supervisory role at the police department. And I do feel that he's going to be a significant component of our leadership team now and in the future. Sergeant Hobus, I'd like to present to you your sergeant badge. Turn around here. See the picture?
Thank you, Sergeant Hobus. Thank you, Chief. We have another.
Now I'd like to introduce to you two of our newest officers. This is Officer Logan Mack and Officer Levi Ledford. They were hired about three months ago. They're currently awaiting their certification from the state, but they've been in the field training program. And hopefully their certification will be back very soon so they can be sworn officers and you'll see their smiling faces more often. But we're glad to have them. They'll be a very quality addition to our team as well.
Congratulations. And welcome to the team. I'd like to, let's see, recognize. Let's see. Bill or you or Cody? Who's gonna?
I will, sir.
Okay. Wastewater biological grade. They can explain all that to you better than I can.
Ladies and gentlemen, you'll have to bear with me. I've been under the weather for it seems like a month now. Cody got hired on with us in April. It's a tough field, wastewater is. It's, there's a lot to it, a lot of science. He had grown running. It's been a really good asset for the town. Been kind of getting in the lab a little bit, which is the technical side of it. He usually works around the outside of the plant. But he went and completed his grade one wastewater, which to me is about the hardest one to get because you really don't have any experience in the field usually. And that first one's the hardest one to get. So this is the first step towards many. So Cody, come on up.
Congratulations, Curtis. Good job. Thank you. Thank you, Jason. At this time, I'd like to ask Sheila Jenkins, Executive Director, for No Wrong Door, if she would come and talk to us about our downtown warming and cooling station that they're on. Make it available. Ms. Sheila.
Thanks for having me back. I can give, okay, good news. The building is definitely being used more than we even thought. The volunteers are just going to shave their penis down there Friday afternoon. But anyway, that's the weekend. I've not got to come out and check it out. I'm very pleased, Dave. Because we've, I think Amy's been there and Devin's been in a few times, but we'd really like you to drop in and check it out. It looks really good. And we're very pleased, as I hope you will be too. We started in December, December the thirteenth. We did a soft opening. I had staff picking people down there and just helping out with their laundry, get showers and things like that. We didn't fully open with our volunteers until after the first of the year. But since we opened, we had, we've had some very cold nights. So the warming session has been open ten nights. And out of those ten nights, we had ninety-one stays. And during the time that we've been open, we keep a record of laundry and showers and all that. We've had, through the end of January, we had sixty-one showers and thirty-five loads of laundry. So just to let you know how much of this being used. The age group that we're talking about is from twenty-two to sixty-three is our age group. So that shows you that all ages can be homeless. And we do have some that work. We had some that stayed in the overnight stadium, it was called, that would get up at six thirty and head off work. So we had, we had all kinds. But I do appreciate the town very much for giving the county the software and the property to have this. The community has received it very well. I have been extremely pleased. I know one of the things that I thought might not go over too good is we had said that we were not going to do the overnight opening, the warming session part, until it got around twenty degrees. And the reason for that is we're not going yet by the cold temperatures. We're going at the dangerous temperatures. Because I didn't have any idea what our volunteer pool was going to look like. Right now, we've got around four volunteers and it's not that. It's a matter of being able to schedule them though in the times that they can work. So we already have opened up on Tuesday afternoons. When it first started out, we were going to do Monday, Wednesday, Fridays. Now we're open on Tuesday afternoons and probably fixing to open up the Thursday afternoons. So our volunteers are looking really good. We did have a very long cold stretch from a Tuesday to a Sunday, which we learned a lot. I can tell you that through that process. The staff and all of us, we had staff there during the night all the time. So, but we do, we have a lot of, a lot of people have volunteered. So the community has brought in food. And I can't thank the community enough. Because we cannot run this without the volunteers and the community support. And obviously, they fed them every night. And they brought clothes. We've been, it's been very well received. Does anybody have any questions?
Did you say forty volunteers? What kind of, what kind of things do you need down there?
Snacks for one thing, because they're going through them pretty fast down there. Yeah, the cup of soup. Because we don't, we've got in the little kitchenette, kitchen area, they, we have a microwave and toaster oven and a refrigerator. And then we also have a hot plate. So we can do the ramen noodles, the oatmeal, that type of thing. So they can do that whether they're in the room or on the shower speed. Right now, we have, we have quite a bit, but we'll always need shampoo and laundry detergent and stuff like that.
Anyone else? Rita?
Did you say ninety-one stays during that cold spell?
During the ten nights that we've been up.
Wow. Thank you.
Anyone else? Sheila, thank you. Thank, No Wrong Door. And if you would, please tell your forty volunteers, we sincerely appreciate them doing what they do to take and help you and your organization take care of those people who are less fortunate than we are. It's a good service and we appreciate everything that you all do.
It's a big deal if you're coming in.
It is.
For something like that. So it's.
It is.
A month of time apart. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. At this time, I'd like to recognize Justin Setser, our planner. And we'll have a opening, a public hearing to receive input on proposed rezonings for Second Street and Cherry Street, identified as PZC eight. Mr. Setser.
Good evening, Mayor, Town Council. Back in July last year, for you, we have a hearing on a variety of different areas of rezone. And this area was brought up, resident brought it up and we all asked the planning board to take further review of it. Planning Board has reviewed this over the last five months, Magg and Ford are looking at it and had some different discussions. They have ultimately come to, to the decision to, they're recommending a rezoning. I think it's of twenty-two parcels and it's eight point seven four acres off of Second Street and three parcels off of Cherry Street. They're all currently zoned R two and they are recommending rezoning it to R one. In your package, you'll see, first map you should see is what the current zoning looks like. You can notice the lighter colors, R one, and the darker yellow is the R two. Our future land use map is showing the whole area is recommended for residential. The ones highlighted in the next map, the parcels highlighted, outlined in blue are those twenty-two in question. And then the dots on them are, of course, the structures, the type of structures on the site. Our staff report and then, of course, the findings of FAG, consistency statement that the planning board voted, voted on and approved. In your, I sent out, everybody should have one at your desk, in front of you, there is a letter from a Thomas Alleygood. He owns property on Second Street. And he lives in Georgia, could not be here. You can see his letter that where he is proposed to the zoning from R two to R one.
Justin, on the map that identifies the kind of structure, I can't read the, the legend's pretty small on the screen, but is the red, what does the red and blue dot indicate?
The blue dots are just frame house, the traditional stick-built home. The red and green dots are either trailers, double wide, something to manufacture homes. And then some of the other ones like the purple, the smaller ones are brick homes. But those are, that's the variety of the items on there. There are, I think, seven parcels that would then become out of compliance, so no zoning.
The con, the concern, I've got two questions. One, the concern in the letter here about if folks want to upgrade an old mobile home, then under the new zoning, they're not going to be able to do that, correct?
They would have to either build a stick-built house, put a modular home, or apply for a variance or a hardship.
So the second question, of those parcels that are outlined, there are several with mobile homes. But then outside the outlined area, there are also parcels that have mobile homes on them. Why, why, why are they not included in this? Why are some parcels included and some aren't?
Originally, Second Street was only about ten parcels and then it expanded to the twenty-two. I don't know why planning board maybe didn't add any others in. Yeah, there is two, when we, there is one off of First Street that has a mobile home on it. It's a double wide. And then there's another one on First Street that's kind of a split piece. That's got manufactured home and a little apartment building.
But those are already so that are one.
Those were, those were zoned R one back in July.
So one of those not in the blue outline, but has a red dot is a noncompliant, legally noncompliant use. But they already would be in the same situation as those others in terms of wanting to replace a mobile that's on that property. Does that include the one on Third Street as well?
Uh, yes, that does include the one on Third Street.
What about Cherry Street? There's a couple down there. I can't tell the colors apart.
Only the ones outlined in the blue are the ones that were up for the night.
So the one on Cherry Street is noncompliant, correct?
Two.
No, it's still not up for me. There's still R two. Yeah, you can have a mobile on R two, but it's not up, that wasn't one they decided to change, or that they changed.
Justin, at the, at the risk of oversimplifying this complicated issue, basically, if you have an R one district, it only allows stick-built houses and R two allows stick-built houses as well as manufactured homes and, and mobile homes. Is that correct?
Yeah. R one also allows modular.
And you said.
In modular.
For a variance or hardship?
Yeah, they can. There's no guarantee that, you know.
So, so if someone's in a, if someone's in a mobile home in this area and it's rezoned to R, to R one and the house is no longer livable and has to be replaced, can they replace it with another mobile home or do they have to go through the variance process or is it just not allowed?
They would have to go through a variance process or try to have a, try to have it rezoned back to R two.
What's the variance process for that, for hardship?
They have to plead a hardship. They failed the application and they have to plead a hardship that's not what they're making. So, I mean, this kind of, you can see it's not what they're making. And just, you know, see if it's something that the Board of Adjustments would want to grant.
And that goes to Board of Adjustments, not to this board?
Yes.
Justin, which, which properties are his?
Um, I believe that's the two, there's a red one. It's kind of the L shape on Cherry and Second, and then the one behind it. You see that one's kind of like an L type. It's kind of like a tetris symbol.
I see that one, but I don't see the other one, which you referred.
From the crowd first and then we discuss.
Yeah, we can, we can do that. Anybody else have a question for Justin? Otherwise, we'll go ahead and and allow for, for those who would like to speak at this public hearing for rezoning. I have no one who has signed up. If you came in and didn't get a chance to sign up to speak during this public hearing on this rezoning, if you would like to speak now, I'll give you an opportunity. Anyone? Yes. If you would, please come up so we can hear you. You can just give us your name. So we'll have it for the record.
My name is Janet Ramsky. I live right in the middle of that area. And to me, this is either a land grab or someone who is very elitist trying to eliminate low-income families. This neighborhood has been pretty low-income forever. When those houses were built in the forties, they were to provide homes for post-war vets, for the most part. And they have been family homes since then. I've lived there for twenty years. And in time, the, those homes that have caused problems, the people living in them have caused problems or they've gotten rundown and, and created issues for the rest of us, they're not the mobile homes. They're the stick-built homes. They're the rentals or, or other type of construction. The mobile home folks are low-income people who have nowhere else to go. They own their property, but they can't afford to build a stick-built home. My son-in-law's in construction. I know about how much it costs to build a house. And I couldn't afford to build a house. No one I know in that neighborhood can afford to build a new house. We just want to live our lives and, and stay in our homes. What you're effectively doing is creating a situation where they would be evicted from their property and not allowed to live there any longer. And I definitely feel that this should be a no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? If not, we'll close the public input session and see if Mr. Setser or any of the board members have any additional questions or concerns before the board considers any action on this regard.
So is the argument that whenever a mobile home finally loses its function by wear and tear or by fire, then there'll be a new stick-built house put there or nothing at all? Or is the argument, well, it's really going to happen that way anyway, because people, you have a mobile home, you just don't go out the next day and haul it away and put a new one. You just patch it up. But I'm very sympathetic to the lady. I'm very sympathetic that this is a section of town that's always been a little, it is what it is. It's Whitmire subdivision, the same Whitmire, with the Whitmire property that we bought. It was developed after the war. And I'm just not anxious to say, okay, you have a fire or something happens, you're out of here. Because they're not going to build a house there. They're just not going to be able to. And we're pushing people away from an area that we're putting a park there and trying to make better. So I bet that's kind of where I'm thinking.
Can I just share a quick point of clarification? It's, I think the council knows this. It doesn't work an eviction on anybody. It doesn't say, hey, we change the zone and get out. It, it is what you just said, Joe. It's, it's about replacement if something, if there's a casualty. The other one quick thing, Joe, you know this better than I do, because it's getting on to ten years since I did residential real estate work. But as best I recall, they changed the lending standards to where you couldn't get, you couldn't get conventional financing because it can't go on the secondary market for a mobile home, a true mobile home as your home. So I get the point. And I don't, and I'm not trying to weigh in one way or the other about what the council decides. But I think that there's, there are bigger forces at work trying to, that run, uh, disincented to try to have a mobile home with residents that are going in this country. It is not this.
Mr. Culpepper.
I said something similar at retreat and it's worth repeating that our actions have a direct effect on people's affordability and if they're able to afford a house. We just heard from a quasi homeless shelter that takes in people and, and warms them. I don't think that we need to take action that makes it harder for people to be homed. And that kind of is what this does. And I'll repeat what I said when we hired a code enforcement officer, that we need to be careful that it's not illegal to be poor in this town. Like, we need to be receptive to that. We need to be understanding that our actions do have a monetary effect on people. We need to take that in consideration.
Anyone else? Mr. Setser, you have anything else to add?
I don't, you saw my staff report. You can see my staff recommendations. My recommendation to the planning board was, if they were wanting to go this route, was to leave the nine parcels that have the twelve manufactured homes, leave those R two. And then you could rezon the others to R one. Myself and John were talking because it's still a residential zone. You're not in spot zoning because they're so similar. It's not like you're going, leaving part commercial and part residential. I feel like that's a compromise to.
I do want to be clear. So your recommendation, anything on this map that has a red dot, then you would recommend that we, we keep that under its current zoning?
Red or green?
How about the purple?
Purple is.
May that be mine.
Purple is. Purple is, uh, brick homes. So those are, those fall under.
The brick homes stay, right?
Yeah.
That was the manager's of the factory.
Well, restate the, just, just for, for my clarification, uh, the recommendation of the planning board is to do exactly one.
The recommendation of the planning board is to rezone all of it to R1. That is my recommendation.
Your recommendation was to consider.
I usually do this. I don't usually try to get recommendations, but.
Uh, so your feeling was similar to some sentiments expressed by some of our board members about the people who are living there, but the planning board, uh, didn't act on that. And they, their, their recommendation is to go ahead and rezone the entire area under consideration. Is that correct?
That's reserve, yes.
What happens to a parcel? So the, the red outweighs the green, I assume, right? So you've got, because you've got a parcel that has red and green on it.
Yeah.
One's got red and blue on it.
Green is double wide.
Well, how about the one that's got two blues and one red?
Yeah, I'll, if, I always count it as one of those 12.
So those are, that's one of the 12 you would leave out?
Yes.
Okay.
Your recommendation would not adversely affect any mobile homeowners? Is that what you're saying?
Pretty much, yes.
Yeah.
And if they, they could choose if something happened to either do a new stick build, if they had their resources.
Yeah, if they wanted a stick build, they could. You can upgrade. Stick builds allowed everywhere.
Does that get us anywhere? I'm not anxious to all of a sudden have a zone where just hit and miss just depends on whether you had a mobile home on that, at that time, which, you know, makes your property more useful in different, in different ways. I'm not sure the board's ready to take any action on it tonight.
I didn't, I didn't include this in the original rezoning when we did First and Third and all those, because it bounced around so much.
Is, is there a difference, uh, in density between R2 and R1?
Um, R2, you can have, the lots have to be a little bit, can be a little bit smaller than R1. I think the minimum lot size in R2 is 8,000 square feet, and the minimum in R1 is 10,000.
So it's not, it's not drastically different?
No, it's, it is.
One's a fifth of an acre and one's a sixth of an acre.
We have a recommendation from the planning board to approve the rezoning of that property. We have concerns about different areas that would be affected and homeowners who would be affected by the rezoning of that property. Is the board prepared to take any action on the recommendation from the planning board as far as this rezoning goes tonight?
I'm not.
Or is there a motion?
We're not required to take action, obviously.
You're not required to take action right now. Eventually, the board will have to make a decision, one way or the other. The earliest you can do it is now. You can do it sometime after tonight, but this is the earliest, so you can do it after the public hearing.
Justin, did you post signs this time?
Uh, yeah, I posted one on Cherry Street, kind of the middle of those three, and then one on both ends of Second.
Does the board need more time to look at this before you take action?
I make a motion that we table for now.
Until, you want to, you want to say table indefinitely or table to the next meeting or when? Or just table it?
Table it.
Until somebody wants to.
There's, there's a motion for Ms. Saleen to table this, any action on this recommendation of the planning board at this time. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to table this issue at this time. This issue can be brought up again. We have a motion and a second discussion. Here are no discussions. All in favor of the motion, please signify it by raising your hand. Opposed but liked, sign. Mr. Sessler, if you will tell the planning board that that has been tabled for the time being.
And thank them for their work.
Yes, yes.
Absolutely.
We must have talked too much last week. It's so quiet. Yeah. That's got our tongue. I think all the fight must have gotten sucked out in this last room.
So, Mr. Sessler, the next item we has, have is item eight, which is a call for two public hearings scheduled for March the 4th. And, uh, the first one would be for a, uh, text amendment to chapter 152, the temporary use permit. And we'll take these, we can take these both together in one motion, Mr. Attorney? Or do we need to have separate motions for each one?
I think it'd be best for the minutes just to have maybe separate motions if you would.
Separate motion. We'll take, we'll take action on the first one, A, the call for public hearing for amendment to chapter 152 temporary use permit. Mr. Sessler, do you have any comments?
Um, no, this is a, this is a draft text that planning board reviewed and recommended, and it's a, for us to establish a temporary use permit for, um, I guess RVs or campers, as you like to call, while, uh, people are, you know, building a home or remodeling a home. With a max allowed for 12 months and one permit, one extension of six months. Um, and then after that, they can't be housed for permanent.
Is there, is there a motion to set the public hearing?
Motion to set the public hearing for Monday, March 4th at 6:05 PM or closer thereafter.
We have a second. We have a second. Motion second, any more discussion? Here are none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. Any opposed but liked, sign. Motion carries. That public hearing will be Monday, March the 4th at 6:05 PM or closer thereafter. The second public hearing is also scheduled for the same date after this public hearing, and it would be for proposed rezonings identified as PZCC 6, 115 parcels. Mr. Sessler?
Uh, yeah, this is one we was back, one of the big ones we did back in July, and, you know, we had some outpouring, people didn't agree to it, sent it back to the planning board. I think it's been back to the planning board twice. Um, and I think they've got it right, was hopefully everybody's happy with it. Um, so this is just setting another hearing to hear that again with that area, West, uh, Olmeyer Road, Olmeyer Road out there.
Good. Is there a motion?
Motion to set the public hearing for 6:10 or as close as possible on March 4th.
Thank you, Mr. Culp ever. Is there a second? Thank you. One of those two. Raise your finger or your hand. Raise your hand there, so, or speak up. I think it was Mr. Lewis, but I, I don't want to get into the fight between board members up here on who made the second on that one, so we'll give it to Mr. Lewis.
They've addressed everybody's concerns out there, as far as you know. Anybody that talked to them or?
Um, I think so. Was it the last one came to the meeting and, uh, they didn't, they kind of got, I think they've got to compromise to make it flow a little better, so we'll see.
Sounds like, it sounds like they tried to address all the issues they could so that they didn't really change. They changed some things, but this, this rezoning is more in line with the comp plan, which is what the goal was, I think, originally. So we had a motion and a second, and more discussion? Anybody? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. Any opposed but liked, sign. That motion carries, so that public hearing will be set then and notification will be thrown out. At this time, we will move to item nine, which is our public session comments. And we have no one who has signed up for public comment tonight, but I'll extend the invitation. If you didn't get a chance to sign up for public comment and you would like to do so at this time, we will recognize you. Seeing no one, we'll close the public comment session and move on to item number 10, new business. On the new business, we have a request for the naming of a park. Wow, what about that? And we'd like to recognize the folks from the Women's History, the Folk Heritage Association of Macon County.
Visual aids.
Yes, thank you. Um, I'm Ann Hyder, and I'm the chair of the Folk Heritage Association. I have a couple of our other members here, Marty Grebel and Teresa Ramsey, who are not only a leadership team for this project, but also board members. So let me first say thank you, because we've been here a couple of times before, review all the history, but you've all been very supportive and encouraging. We've had extra time and wonderful support from Amy, from the mayor. We have two liaison members, Rita Saleen and Stacy Duffy, and all of them so helpful as is Justin Sessler. But we appreciate you all coming and meeting and answering our calls as we're proceeding. So I assume in your package, you've got the letter and the, uh, application. And also, I'm assuming you don't approve names for parks much on your agenda, so you don't necessarily have this formality. But, um, in summary, you know that we have, uh, a park, which maybe one of you ladies will have to take this around and show, so they can argue. Just fill it open.
Justin's got your knees a little bit, Ann.
Oh, okay. All right. Wherever, whatever helps make one them. Okay, thank you. Because the back of it is not up there. Yeah. Okay.
But now we can't see Ann.
Yeah.
I'm used to that.
No.
And that one thing, I know you do have one new member, and we'll be glad to help this gentleman catch up on some of these happenings, or maybe, so feel free, you can have any extra background. But as you know, at this point, we're ready for our celebration on March the 23rd to install the sculpture of three women. And at that location, which you recognize your pump house in that drawing, it will look very different. Uh, and so, uh, we would like to get the approval to name the park the Women's History Park. Um, we considered some other options, but kind of said, what is the public going to say? What's the community going to say? And they're going to say, oh, let's go down there to the Women's Park or Women's History Park. It is the trailhead for the Women's History Trail, which goes up through Main Street and a couple of other sites. So that is what our proposal is. If you have questions, I'll be glad to entertain them and/or anybody's having a.
This is just the area where the monument's going to be, is, I guess you would call it a mini park. It's not a huge, huge area.
Pocket park.
Pocket park, that's, that's the word I was looking for. And your, your, your recommendation is the town officially give it the name of the Women's History Park. Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Anyone have any questions?
I have a comment.
Yes.
Since it's east of the mound and in between the mound and the river, and since that's such an important area, and since the Greenway has a sort of a, not a real name and policy, but a tradition of naming things in both English and Cherokee, I think it'd be a good idea to go to the speakers group and have the, the park named Women's History Park translated into Cherokee and have, have the name visible in the Cherokee language.
I will say, as we've considered some options, just remember, we've got an African-American, a Native American, and a Pioneer. So being sensitive, we're trying to represent the three cultures, but.
I believe that's a very culturally significant area to one of your.
I don't think the sculpture does that. The sculpture does accentuate the fact.
Speaks to the three cultures.
Yeah, three cultures.
And there will be markers that tell the story of these three ladies who have history connected with each other and to this Dracula.
Well, what I like is, Women's History Park sounds good, and it's got presently no name attached to it, meaning in the future, if there was a better name with somebody's name on it, we wouldn't be taking somebody's name off of it. So I think it's a great place to at least start.
Well, as a girl dad, I'm extremely excited about this, and I would like to make the motion to name it Women's History Park.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a second?
I'd love to second it.
We'd love to have you second that, Ms. Saleen. We have a motion and a second to officially name this area, this pocket park, the Women's History Park of Franklin, North Carolina. Any discussion? Here are none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. Any opposed but liked, sign. That motion carries. Thank you for all your hard work. Thank you all.
Thank you.
I'll just add that so many hours, these women, uh, who have donated their, so much of their own resources as well as time to get this, this far, it's just an amazing accomplishment.
It absolutely is.
And then they work on other stuff, too.
Yeah, they do work on other stuff.
Small amount of number of people get most of it done, isn't it? Isn't that the 80/20 rule? 80/20. 20% of people do 80/20 stuff. That's right. 20% of the people do 80/20.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, that's it.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to recognize our finance director, Sarah Bishop, and our town manager, Ms. Owens. Uh, as we discussed at our retreat, the fund balance policy, I think we had a long fruitful discussion about that, and so, uh, can you kind of bring that up to date and give us a simple, uh, explanation of what you're asking the board to do officially tonight?
Um, so you have another copy of the fund balance policy in your packet? It's the same thing that we gave to you at the retreat? Um, oh, my microphone's louder. I just want to point that out. Um, so, I mean, I feel like we answered a lot of questions at the retreat. I don't know if you guys still have any.
Let me see if I can simplify it for my own sake. Basically, the fund balance policy is, when we have money left over at the end of the year, we need to save it, and we call that fund balance. And so the policy that was discussed at the retreat is that if we can maintain a minimum fund balance equal to 80% of our operating budget, that gives us 10 months' worth of expenditures without any money coming in. And that's our minimum. If we get, and our maximum would be, if we got more and more money coming in, that we would limit it to $100,000. Anything that comes in.
Hundred percent. Hundred percent.
Hundred percent, I'm sorry. Hundred percent of the annual operating budget. So if we have money in, in addition to the hundred percent, then the board subsequently can decide on how that extra money is spent, most likely on some capital improvement or capital purchase or something that's a long-lasting thing. So basically, uh, that's basically what the policy would be, is that to set the minimum at 80% and the maximum at 100%. And, um, anything over 100%, if you're in that situation, can be re-appropriated for capital expense. Is that, is that clear enough?
We just, we'd like to have a policy in place so we can, I can work with Amy to ensure that we're remaining fiscally responsible by at least having the savings so that we can operate, but also not holding too much money to where we're not, um, being responsible to our citizens. So this will help keep, keep us in check.
I just wanted to clarify that sidewalks are a capital expenditure.
There you go.
And recreational items like bicycle pump tracks, that type of thing is also a capital expenditure?
It is. It's a capital construction project.
Sounds like you may have some ideas in mind. Mr. Culp.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the fund balance policy when we can, we can discuss.
Thank you, sir. Second? Mr. Lewis, second's the motion. Any more discussion? Mr. Culp ever?
I still can't wrap my head around the timeline issue, so maybe we can get some clarification on that.
And as soon as we have a policy in place, we can definitely make those plans.
Okay. But I mean.
No. I think his question is, let's say we adopt it tonight, in how long of a time period should we allocate to get, because we're above it right now. How long the time period should, should we shoot for to get it within compliance?
Or at least have figured out what we're going to spend it on. I mean, is that coming by this budget cycle? Is that?
I don't think you need to, because it took us a long time to build where we're at. I don't expect you guys to be able to spend it all in two months. Um, I would just like to know we have a plan to get within those bounds.
Yeah, fine.
So in the policy, you know, I've got a 36-month window for if we get below, that we're going to have that long to get back up. I would like to be within compliance, at least within the next 36 months with our overage, if that's.
It don't take that long to spend it.
No, realistically, within this year, we'll probably have it sorted out and figured out. And we're not in a rush. We're not going to try to get it done by this budget cycle coming up.
No. During the budget cycle is when you determine.
No, during the budget cycle is when you determine what your priorities is.
And that's what the policy says.
It might figure itself out for the time we get our capital needs and expenditures. It might be a problem that works itself out anyway.
Well, it's a good problem to have, but I mean, it is, it's a substantial amount of money that we're going to have to be stewards of.
Well, it's taxpayer money, and if it's just sitting there, they're not getting a return on investment.
I, I agree, but there's, there's different returns.
There are, there are other towns, municipalities throughout this state who would love to have a goal such as that because they're having trouble even getting up to fifty percent of their operating budget, much less a minimum of eighty percent. We've been very blessed and fortunate in this town to have good financial management and good expenditures on the side of our department heads to hold expenses down, and we're in good shape financially, and so we want to make sure that they have a good policy to go by so that when you do have extra money, that you can spend it on those important issues that the Board is interested in, but you don't cut yourself short should an emergency come up during the year you hadn't planned on.
And we are in better shape because of ARPA. I mean, we just, we had some extra resources.
We had extra resources, we've had good sales tax revenue coming in, we've had lots of investment income coming in since the interest rates have gone up. These are things that are not something we can budget for year after year. So by having this policy in place, when the audit report is done and completed, then you know where we're at percentage-wise, and then audit report comes to you November, December, by the time we start budget, the next January, then you're, you know how much money you may have available as an excess.
More discussion. Anybody else have anything to add? Are you ready to take action? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. Any opposed by the like side? That motion carries. Ms. Bishop, you have a policy in place to work on the budget with, and you and Ms. Owens will do a good job as you... Thank you. And while I'm at it, thank the Board for a good retreat. I thought we had some really good discussions during our recent retreat, covered a lot of areas, and gave us a good roadmap to start working on. Item C, request approval for some street closures. Ms. Owens?
The first street closure request we have is for the Franklin, it's actually the Macon County Farmers Market, is it not? Not the Franklin Farmers Market. For Iowa Street, Saturdays from nine AM until two PM, and Devon is here to give you an explanation of what that means because there's some grant funding that made all of this possible. Let her explain a little bit about it.
Absolutely. Thank you for your time. Quick disclaimer, I like to think of myself as a fairly decent public speaker, but I am in fact carrying a future kickboxer, so if I have to make a pause at an awkward moment, could you just smile and nod and accept my presence? One thing I'd like to say real quick is the street closure would only be made through November, not February through November, so if we could just change that, thank you so much. And thank you for considering Iowa Street as the location for the new Macon County Farmers Market. I have some exciting details to share with you tonight. This Farmers Market was designed with three main benefits in mind. The first benefit being a high-traffic venue for the vendors of the market, which would include local growers, food producers, bakers, makers, crafters, food trucks. If you look at Iowa Street, we probably have at least forty booth spaces for those local vendors. Secondly, would be more access to healthy local food for our community as well as visitors to our community. And thirdly, would be an economic benefit for businesses downtown. Hopefully, we'd be attracting more traffic for them on Saturday mornings as well. And so the market intends to accomplish all this with a multifaceted approach. Firstly, we've applied for our Level One C-Three status with the help of a nonprofit attorney. We hope to hear back on that in a few weeks. And with that Level One C-Three status, we are applying for multiple grants and soliciting sponsorships as well for the market to support all of the operations that we're talking about tonight. We are also implementing a number of different food programs. We have already applied and been accepted by the USDA as a SNAP and EBT vendor, which means that we'll be able to accept SNAP and EBT payments from market visitors to the vendors. For that program as well, one of the grants that we've already applied for and been approved for is going to cover all of the fees associated with accepting those SNAP and EBT payments, which means that the processing fees won't be passed on to the vendors. We are also participating in what is sometimes referred to as the Double SNAP Program. That means that it multiplies the SNAP and EBT dollars spent at the market. So anyone who brings their SNAP or EBT card and scans it and says, I want ten dollars to spend at the market, they'll actually receive twenty dollars to spend at the market. In addition, there is a local nonprofit who is currently anonymous, who has provided what we're calling a produce purchase guarantee. So every Saturday at the close of the market, this nonprofit is coming in and purchasing up to one thousand dollars of perishable produce from various vendors in the market and taking that produce and donating it to Macon County Carenet. So not only is it a benefit to the vendors because they have produce that they didn't sell that day perhaps, but then we're also feeding the community at the same time. See, there's one of those pauses, not... In addition, we are also implementing a number of market activities to bring more visitors in. One is weekly live music, and also enrichment activities, which includes cooking demonstrations and food cultivation and live pollinator demonstrations, basically anything to do with preserving the assets involved with food cultivation in our region as well. So in conclusion, why am I here today? I'm here because I'm excited about bringing this new activity to downtown Franklin. We want this to be the sort of place where families want to come with their kids on Saturday mornings, stay, spend more time, visit some more of the local businesses and restaurants, and also, as I mentioned, a major benefit to these vendors who maybe haven't found the right opportunity to sell their produce outside of their home or farm yet. So does anybody have any questions that I can answer tonight?
One question I'd have, Ms. Owens, is there any issues concerning security or traffic that would interfere or cause a problem with closing during these times?
There shouldn't be, and they've worked closely with craig trees to make sure that there's still access, the church would still have access in case there's a funeral or anything.
How will this affect their current location for the Farmers Market? The current location on Backstreet Palmer Street?
So we are actually, that is a separate Farmers Market. So these would be completely separate vendor opportunities, and vendors would have the option to choose either market, but they're very differently structured markets. As I mentioned, we're looking at some very big operations, including live music, cooking demonstrations, enrichment activities, and things like that, which is definitely something that requires a good bit of funding. So that's where the Five Oh One C-Three status and a lot of the marketing is going to come into play.
Would those vendors get any preference? I mean, I'm concerned about that market down there because they've been there for a while. I mean, I know Stacy had said there's not really a person that's in charge of that market, but what kinds of outreach have you tried to do for the market that's generally there?
As far as management or leadership, I haven't been able to find any, any information for them online. I've searched their social media pages, websites that talk about that market. I'm not sure who's actually in charge, but I have visited the vendors in person, and I have been in contact with some of the vendors that are there right now. There's not many there during the winter season, but the ones that are there, I have been in contact with them in person or by email. We will be doing a call-out, inviting vendors to apply for this new market, and they are already on my email list to reach out to. If they're interested, of course, many of them may be very happy where they are.
Good. Any other questions? Is there a motion concerning the closing of the street? We have a motion, is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Here and now? Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Saline.
I just wanted to say how happy I am that you're going to be able to take EBT and SNAP because I know for farmers that they, it's just too big a hassle for them to fool with. So to be able to do that and to have that kind of resource for our people and have it well-advertised in the paper, that those would be accepted, I think that's huge, and so thank you.
It's exciting. I think that we're going to get, we're going to reach a lot more people that way, and it's the people who really need the access to have food.
I think it sounds like a, it sounds like an anchor for Saturday mornings downtown. I think it's, I think it's great.
Sounds good. You heard a motion and a second? Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Any opposed by the like side? That request is approved. Thank you.
Mayor Hamae, one, one.
Yes.
That when there's dates for town sponsor events such as Pumpkin Fest, that would be a date that we would have to exclude because we haven't had all of those spaces for that.
I look forward to collaborating with the event managers and, and working our way, you know, to, to be a part of the event rather than a hindrance in any way.
Thank you. We have, we have with us tonight a very special young lady by the name of Gracie Parker, who's going to come and speak to us a little bit about the closing of Iowa and Church Street for Wise Kids. Gracie?
I am here this evening to get your approval for my segment annual youth mental health rally, which I would like to have on April twenty-seventh of twenty twenty-four downtown at the gazebo from two PM to five PM. I'm asking for Iowa Street and Church Street to be closed from twelve to six PM to set up and break down for my event, for vendors, set up and children's activities, as well as line up for my march from county courthouse to city hall and back between four fifteen to four thirty-five PM. When you meet city police to close that section of Main Street during your march. As a small token of my appreciation for all your support last year and again this year, I would like to present you Mayor Horton and your fellow city council members with this book, this book Wise Kids, and I published last September called Shattered.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Twenty-one stories of lives broken by substance abuse and how we took the pieces back together. Wise Kids is my nonprofit organization I started last summer to continue to raise awareness to the youth mental health crisis that our children face today in our community, city, county, and state, even nationwide. One of our goals is to have trauma counselors in every school starting at the elementary school level and to continue to improve existing programs for youth mental health, prevention versus intervention. I would like to share a few things with you. Since the rally at last year, I have attended a town hall meeting which includes both Carolina Department of Human Health Services Secretary Cody Kinsley, Senator Corbin and Bogus, Casey Cooper, and several others and chair of King of Carolina. Over the summer, I've attended most monthly school board meetings and county council meetings to request data they have collected in regards to youth mental health issues and bullying. In a letter from Superintendent Munch, he told me that they cannot share the student information. The only thing that is being collected is the behavioral issues based on the current data available. We must start to collect the proper anonymous data from K through twelve to identify what causes these behavioral issues, especially in elementary school children. We have to identify the root causes. Only then can we put programs together to help children with mental health, with mental traumas and/or behavioral issues. Unfortunately, we have not seen any major changes or efforts to make that happen. That's why I will not stand down. I will not stop until we get, until kids get the help we need here and everywhere. In September, I was in Washington DC and spoke with several congressmen. I was also invited and spoke to the Republican Study Committee lunch, to sixty and more House of Representatives at the Capitol about our youth mental health presses, and this is why events like my youth mental health rally are so important. In addition, in addition, Mayor Horton, I would like to request that you once kick off our youth mental health event that hopefully will be anonymously approved tonight. Thank you. Is there any questions?
Thank you, Gracie.
Is it on a Sunday or on a Saturday?
It's twenty-eighth.
I said the twenty.
No, no, it wasn't her that made the mistake, it was me. I had Saturday listed, so it's Sunday.
The twenty-eighth is on Sunday, yes.
Anybody have any questions?
No, it's, Ms. Parker, you've made a huge impact in this community since you've taken up this call, and I've heard several good things about you, and you've inspired a lot of people.
Thank you.
Gracie's done a tremendous job for a young person her age to take on this issue, to speak up on behalf of those who haven't had a voice so far. I wouldn't be surprised if sometime in the future, they had another person at that statue downtown where the Women's History Trail starts. Could be you. Anybody have any questions?
What do you think is going to have, what do you think is, needs to happen to get the data collected that you think we just have to have? I mean, what's the, the mechanism that you think has to happen?
I'm not quite sure about that, but I do think putting trauma counselors into the school and for them to collect the data for that to happen, but not to mention any students' names specifically, just what have they talked about and see the main cause in these issues and make sure that after we have studied that, there should be more trauma counselors and maybe two in every school. A trauma counselor is not a guidance counselor. A guidance counselor just helps with behavioral topics, not mental health issues.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second? We have a second. Thank you, Mr. Guffey. Any discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you, Gracie. Thank you all for what you do.
And keep going, Gracie, don't stop. Keep going.
Philip Street Artisan Alley, Saturday, March twenty-third, April thirteenth and April twenty-seventh, from ten AM to six PM. Ms. Owens?
There's your last request in front of you. Another representative from Artisan Alley here, do you wish to speak a little bit about your agenda? So this event is actually, it's a good segue into having Farmers Markets and other activities downtown because they would start in March. They would be March twenty-third, April thirteenth, and April twenty-seventh. It would be on Philip Street. Thirty-five, minimum thirty-five vendors. We can max out just below fifty. So that is the request, and that would be the first to get downtown.
No reason that you can say from a security or a traffic standpoint that this would interfere?
We already got Iowa Street closed anyway, right? So we're keeping Main Street open, Backstreet open?
Yeah, we don't close Iowa until, uh, May for Farmers Market.
Oh, okay. All right. But I mean, even if, if this event grows and they want Philip Street closed in the future, some will take it to Iowa, that doesn't really affect that much because we still have flow of traffic. We just have two independent events going on side streets.
Make it happen.
Yeah, yeah.
We've gotten several different requests, so there'll be some more coming back to you.
Motion?
We have a motion to approve.
Yeah.
Have a motion to approve. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Thomas. We have a motion, a second to approve. Any more discussion? Here and now, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Any opposed by the like side? That motion carries. Tasks order number three from McGill Associates, request approval. I'll refer that to our Town Manager, Ms. Owens.
Earlier this fiscal year, McGill completed the design for Wilkie Street's sewer line improvements. This has been on your CIP for six years. As you know, a few years ago, we had a major sewer backup into someone's home, and it cost the town quite a bit of money. We were hoping that this would be a project that we could do in-house, however, due to the fact that there has to be some additional manholes added along the system, and it interferes with some different utilities that are out there, it's better for us to actually bid this one out. McGill is one of our engineers that we have on call. They've recommended a task order of forty-five thousand dollars that would take us through all of the development of the RSP, the bids, any documentation that we need from that, contract administration, so that we have good numbers for our budget for next year. As you know, the way I like to do things is to budget engineering and design one year and construction the next, so that we're not having such a difficult time getting everything done when sometimes we have supply chain issues and weather issues.
So then you even supervise the construction then? Some moves?
We have a motion to approve the task order number three from a guild associates. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
What was our initial, I mean, we've been doing this for a few years now. What was our initial projected cost on the whole thing if we were gonna do it in-house?
Well, if we were gonna do it in-house, we were still projecting that it would take weeks and weeks because we'd have to start, stop, start, stop, start, stop. If we did it, contracted it out, it's a fluid thing. We can keep things flowing.
We don't, we're not venturing a guess. That's why we're paying them 45 grand to tell us how much?
Previously in your CIPs, it was somewhere around half a million dollars.
Okay. So it'll be that plus, plus?
Plus whatever. So, but it will remedy that issue permanently, especially at the end.
Because stuff flows downhill.
This is some old stuff that's out there. Then we can handle that while they're...
And we don't have a choice. We have to do it.
We certainly don't want Sore backing up into people's houses.
Not again.
Not ever again.
We've been on CIP for six years.
Any other discussion? If not, all was in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. Opposed by like sign, that motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Owens. The next one is approval of a bid award for sidewalk replacement and reconditioning for Philip Street and on Harrison Avenue. Ms. Owens?
Previously, of course, we did these with Short Maple. There was, we terminated the contract that we had originally for convenience because we had that clause in there. We did another RFP for those specific streets, and we required a mandatory walkthrough prior to bids, so that everybody was on the same page. Those bids were opened on Friday afternoon at 3:00. You'll see the bid tabulation sheet that you have in front of you. We had three bidders. JE Concrete Construction have a stake pool, Rassle Enterprises, from Highlands, and Dan Grady Company from Silva. JE Concrete Construction did have a low bid. However, they did not complete the mandatory walkthrough, therefore they are disqualified because we feel like if they did do a walkthrough, that their bid would be closer to the other two. So at this point, Rassle Enterprises is your lowest responsible responsive bidder. And you do have money in the market funding for this capital project. So they have to make a slight adjustment depending on what happens. But I would like your permission to move forward with the warning to Rassle Enterprises and start some contract negotiations so we can take care of different sidewalk's, hopefully before the end of this week.
We have a recommendation from the town manager to award the contract to the lowest responsible responsive bidder that meets the qualifications specified. Is there a motion to do that? Mr. Guffey? Mr. Lewis, seconds. Any discussion? Mr. Culpepper?
I can't find it in my book, but it, the amount we're paying them for that is about how much we were gonna pay for everything altogether. So we basically had to pay for short maple out of pocket, and then this is about the original budget we had for all the projects together, right?
Yes. But again, we have the ability now that we've pulled together awards and negotiating to see if there's anything that we could do in-house that we see as...
Well, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that where it is not feasible or overly burdensome on taxpayers to make a five-foot sidewalk, it is in our sidewalk plan to do four feet, as long as we have five-foot handicap ability to turn around every, I forget how many feet it is. So... Okay, so wherever it, if there's a bank coming down or whatever, just, I mean, make it the four feet instead of spending, you know, buco's of money because we need to stretch that sidewalk money as far as we can and keep going on the sidewalks. Keep fixing them and lay more sidewalk.
Okay. Anybody else? We've heard a motion. All those in favor, please signify it. Did we, we did have a motion and a second, so all those in favor, please raise your hand. I was gonna ask for an amen after Mr. Culpepper's speech, but I guess a motion would be better. Thank you. Departmental reports. This is Public Works Night in Franklin, North Carolina. So, Mr. Deal, would you please come forward?
Thank you, Mayor, Town Council. Kyle is unable to be with us tonight. He's under the weather. So I am going to talk a little bit about the water treatment plant. It's not got a whole lot going on out there in the last couple of months, but he's working on some outside lining around the facility. He has also set up a soda bi-carb tank to help feed into the plant to help our pack work better. So we had a tank down at the wastewater treatment plant that we use for the same thing. So we ended up letting him use it down there. Also, we have our clear well plans are here, and we will be looking over those in the next couple of weeks to try to fine tune those down. So clear well plans are underway. So moving into the Public Works Department. We are, CBL updates, we have three active permit holders right now. So we're still working with Cherokee to get our guys over there and get tested and be able to go take this final exam part of this. During the cold winter, we had a few water issues, as you know. We've had quite a few backflow preventers where people had left on Friday, didn't come back till Monday. Some of these backflow preventers decided to freeze and bust. So we're trying to tell people they need to go in there and let some water run throughout this cold weather. Hopefully that's passed us now. But we didn't have as many water break issues this time within our system as we did last year, which is a positive. Most of it was mostly homes and businesses. Give you a quick update on Claude Street water line. We are up past each Franklin school, past Dan Street. We're probably gonna be testing that section of pipe this week. We didn't want to put any sidewalk in and down in front of the school until that passed its test. We didn't want to put sidewalk in and have to take it back out. So hopefully Wednesday, we're looking at probably testing that part of the water line up through there by the school. And they will be heading on back up Claude Street to where we stopped there to come down and work in front of the school. And then we also still have Lakeside Drive to finish out there. But that project is moving along pretty well. No major issues other than we have one water break down there. Not our fault, not the contractor's fault. The line just decided to bust. And then we had a one-inch service line came out. So we've had a couple of incidences where we've had to stay a little longer and work on these things, but they, they're doing a really great job up there. Also, a couple of my employees, one of them is going to Collection School this week. So we're really happy about getting some of our guys now caught up and start training again. There for a while, we were having retirement after retirement and people coming in. So we've got a guy in Collection School right now, which I'm really excited about. I think he's really excited. He texted me at 8:00 this morning, telling me when he could take the test. So I was really happy about that. Also too, I talked with Bronson's Grading on the Boys Pump Station. Unfortunately, we still have a few supply chain issues out there. So the precast for that pump station should be in in the next couple of weeks, and that project should start going pretty quick after a couple of weeks timeframe. Also too, the generator for this substation is at my Public Works building. So really pleased about having a generator for that one up and running. So we've had our generator services complete their stuff for us. And other than that, Public Works is moving right along. And I sure do appreciate the mayor's and the town council's support of my department. And we really try to keep things moving along and try not to have too many hiccups. With that, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Jason, wanna speak with us? Or anybody else? You gonna do it for everybody, or you gonna let Jason? Okay. And then, and then, and then Chris, or whatever.
Hello again. This one pains me, but I want to talk about the NOV. I'm sure all of y'all are aware that we got in January. Our guys at the wastewater plant work hard. I'm sure nothing like this happens, but sometimes Mother Nature has a mind of her own. We had a historic rainfall, over five inches in about a 12-hour period. We, our tanks can only hold so much water. When they get to the top, they hit the overflow pipes and they stay in the system, but it moves still a lot quicker than it's supposed to. Public Works guys came down and helped. We wrapped the rain, bulldozed and backowed and trying to control the flow of the water to keep it from the river as best we could. So no fines were, weren't the only ones in the state of North Carolina to have this issue. So, but we, like I said, we do have plans in place. Sometimes those plans are just irrelevant when Mother Nature decides that she's had enough. So the wintertime update, we had no breaks, no issues at the wastewater plant. So all precautions we took when it got down to two or three degrees, all worked. We are in the process of being able to run back keys for the town. That is something we have to send off on the line breaks. And there's a boil water advisory for the town. Sometimes we have to wait 24, 48 hours before we have the results. We will now, since we're state certified lab at the wastewater plant, will be able to run those in-house and get the results to them within 24 hours and not have to send that off. It'll be probably myself and Mr. Allen initially. We look for all four guys to be able to run it, just depending on who's on call or who might be there. So we will have that in-house. State has contacted their behind, but we are getting our new permit, our five-year permit. PFOS will probably be on it, so you'll be hearing a lot more from me about that here in the next five years. So look forward to that. Other than that, Mr. Allen's cramming 29 years of lab knowledge into Jake and Cody, and everybody's morale couldn't be better, and we just have a great environment. And I appreciate what y'all do and the support we got from the taxpayers. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Chris?
Good evening. A couple quick updates from Streets Department. We were able to get all of our Christmas decorations taken down. Only ones we still currently have up are our winter decorations, our snowflakes. We're gonna take those down towards the end of the month. We'll get that scheduled out, get those taken away. We were able to get a lot of our Christmas decorations stored in our new facility, but a redone facility down at the sewer treatment plant. Thanks to Jason and his staff for helping put a new floor in an existing structure we had to give us a lot better storage ability. Now everything's in one spot. We know where it's at. We're good to go. Currently gonna be out, some of my crew will be out doing some winter lawn mowing. We like to go out, we'll start doing some more in the wintertime because you can see everything a little better, more manholes, more telephone pedestals. And that, this time, we're gonna try to reach some of the higher-up pieces and start pushing some of that material back. That in the, in the spring and summer when they're full is a little bit more hazardous, start throwing that stuff around. So we'll be doing that. Project-wise, other than sidewalks, we've got a couple of other things we're trying to look at this fiscal year. We've got a big culvert replacement, old co-drive that we're wanting to do. It's starting to fail. So we gotta get that one looked at. So we're getting ready to put scope of work, RSPs together for that. It's gonna be paving the Short Maple Street to go along with the new sidewalk we just put in, so that'll kind of finish up, you know, Maple Street on the other side is in good shape. We did that sidewalk last year. We got the new sidewalk there this year. So that'll kind of finish off one entire section of road there. And then just continue with Harrison and Phillips and start gearing up where we're gonna head to next.
Anyone have a question? I have it from a fairly reliable source that spring is only six weeks away.
It's here today.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Letter from the council. Local preference purchasing.
We talked about this briefly at your retreat. It is a concern because we always want to be physically responsible, but we also want to be able to help those in our neighborhoods and everything to do with local purchasing. In our current policy manual, we do have a section on local buying. There's your copies of there that says, of course, we have a responsibility to the citizens and local businesses. However, we must ensure maximum value is obtained for each public dollar spent. Do you do, as a council, have the ability to set different standards for that? Specifically, a percentage, if you're looking at different quotes that are received? To say if it's within 2% to 5%, depending on what we choose to look at? That if, that we can use a local vendor over another? It's just the, I say local preference purchasing policy. Currently, it's very generalized. We don't have that in place. Our department heads have been very conscious about using local vendors. Anything that's above our CO threshold of $500 requires the three quotes anyway, and we've been actively working to do that. So if you wish for us to pursue doing a more specific policy, I just need some clarifications to move forward with that. Like, what do we consider local? Is it Franklin? Is it Macon County? Is it Macon, Jackson-Swayne County, Northeast Georgia? I just need some more specifics. And if you do choose to have something related to a percentage, what percentage would you like for that to be? So discuss.
If, if it's gonna be local, I would say Macon County, even though, I mean, we love our neighbors, but Macon County is Macon County. So I don't think it should be too much of a difference, but it, percentage-wise, could we not draft some language that allow us to allow a local vendor to meet, to match a bid, or is that off the table?
You have to go by the state purchasing contract laws, which may or may not allow that. I don't think it does.
If we get three bids and, you know, somebody in Augusta, Georgia's lower, can we not tell our local vendor that that's the bid and see if, give them a chance to match it or match it within a percentage?
Well, it depends, but it's pretty limited. I mean, generally, the whole purpose of the sealed bid is that you, with sight unseen, everybody's, is their best shot. And, and, you know, if it's required by law to be that, if you've got a, especially if it's, if you're in the formal bid range, you can't do that because the, then the person who submitted that low bid is kind of, they've got the right to try and get the contract.
Gotcha. Okay. So then we would need to devise a percentage?
Yeah, I was thinking 2%. I asked Amy to bring this up because I think the policy that we do have is good, but I just think it gives our local, local business people a moment. Because a lot of times these mom and pops are, that are here may be, not, not be bidding against mom and pop. Scheme of bid is 2% a lot. I don't know. I guess that's up for debate. I think some municipalities do as much as 5%. I don't know that we need to go that far. But just something to give these people a little bit of, you know, when they're trying to figure, trying to figure a bid, that we're giving, I don't think 2% is a lot.
Well, we have to figure at least some, if it's in Macon County, some of the tax money, sales tax on that, does come back to us. And there's math that we can figure out exactly what the percentage is there.
But it's not anything unheard of. There's lots of, not just in North Carolina, but I've seen in South Carolina, Georgia, and all over.
Why do you say 2%? Just because you think that's...
I just think it's a happy medium. I think the wings will do 5%.
5% is like a lot.
That seems like a lot to me.
In figuring it based on like what my signature authority would be, up to 30,000. 5% is $1,200. So that's a big difference in bids that you would be paying that additional $1,200 to get the local dinner.
So you've got this balance. You want to do everything you can to support our local businesses, but you're spending the taxpayers' money, so you want to make sure you get the best deal for them. And so it's a balance. And so I think if you, if you do, if you go down this road, 2% sounds a lot more realistic and reasonable than 5% if we do that. But like I say, you need to, you need to have the language put together to, and that would take an amendment to our purchase policy. And it has to be make sure that it's in accordance and not in violation of any purchasing contract guidelines set by the state.
I just want to know if the board has appetite for it. That's why we meant to bring it up at the retreat, and we, you know, we talked briefly about it. And then, so I just, if the board has an appetite for it, that's all I wanted to get, get your temperature. But I think it could be a good...
I, I, I can't speak for the rest of the board, but I think we do have an appetite for trying to do what we can to help our local folks because they're not only, only, they're not only operating a business here, but they're citizens and taxpayers as well. So we want to do what we can to be fair for them. And there are times in the past where I had an opportunity to bid out vehicles and so forth, and we didn't have this type of procedure. And you had, hate to give the contract to a company 100 miles away from here. And the other thing that you have is if you buy something local, you have to think about, well, what if I need some backup? What if I need some repair? What if I need some repair? What if I need something after the sale? So that plays into it as well, I think. That's one consideration that should go into the fact that if we're trying to do local, that we not only get a good price and support our local vendors, we also have service after the sale.
I agree with David. I think at two percent, it probably in the grand scheme of things is going to be a wash anyway.
It's somewhat close. Yeah, in, in a real world example, we're bidding on something, it's going to be around a hundred thousand dollars. We get one bid, a hundred thousand dollars from out of town. One bid's a hundred and two thousand dollars from in-town. It gives us the flexibility to choose that in-town vendor. Doesn't bind us to it, though, because it's within two percent?
Would the board like to give authority to the town manager and the town attorney to work up some language for an amendment?
It has to be anything that's informal.
If it's in a formal...
Okay. What, what's our threshold for formal, informal?
So state, state law sets all those things, and under thirty thousand is the reason that that's the limit for, for manager authority. There's no process at all. It's go find somebody to do it, hire them. If it's between thirty and ninety thousand dollars for equipment and...
Falls in, falls into it.
General sort of goods, you can do an informal bid process, those try to get through bids, um, but that's just pick up the phone, the caller, and see what they've bid at. Above ninety for those things, uh, it's a formal bid, and construction, if it's over half a million, so that, that one's...
For my example, within our threshold then, somebody bids fifty thousand dollars, a local company bids fifty-one thousand dollars, we then would have the choice of who to go with. We could go with the local vendor who's two percent more at fifty-one thousand.
I think you can, and that's what, I, I want to review it. There's, and I seem to remember, we talked about something that this got into, to writing that Amy was talking about, we did having the person annual year ago. I'm looking at ten different art, or five or six different articles that, that school of government put out about how to do this, and let us review it, some and talk through it. We'll give you good examples of how it works, we'll bring it back to you.
Would, would the board like to have the attorney and the, and the manager take a look at that and bring something back for the board's consideration at, at another meeting? Any, any problem with that? If you could do that, we'd appreciate it.
If I could just get some clarification, are we going to have a separate local purchasing policy, or are we going to incorporate it into our current purchasing policy to replace that verbage that...
You mean this local buying thing?
Yeah, that, that's our local purchasing policy. That's just the excerpt in regards to local purchasing. I was just curious if we're creating a whole new policy or just amending our current?
I think you just amend what you already have. You don't want to change. You don't want to have five hundred different policies out there. If you've got one policy that covers purchasing, then I think you just need to amend what you're doing if you want to change the way you're doing that. Seem like that'd be the simplest way to do it.
Policy creation policy.
TBS reports.
Don't reinvent the wheel. Okay. Is we all right with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
And those incentives will be two percent?
They're going to work on that. Confirmation of mayor's appointments. At the retreat, I asked some of our board members to consider serving or continue to serve on various committees and under the mayor's authority, the mayor can appoint people, and, and so I looked at some of the outstanding members of this council and asked them if they could put their expertise to work in certain areas and spread the load. And so Mr. Collins has been our ABC Board liaison for this past year, just started that, and he's, he agreed, I think. Did you not, Joe, to continue in that?
Sure. That's what it takes.
Yeah, that's what it takes. Uh, and, and Mr. Culpepper, who is a very enthusiastic recreational supporter and hiker and all that kind of good stuff and loves the outdoors, I asked him if he would consider serving as our, uh, appointment to the Appalachian Trail Conservancy Committee. Mr. Culpepper, is that okay with you?
Yeah, I don't know what time they meet, but yeah, that, that'll work for me.
All right. Uh, and, uh, Ms. Salane, who has an interest in housing and attended in honor behalf of a meeting of the Housing Consortium, as a matter of fact, the day of our retreat, wasn't it that morning?
Yes, it was that morning.
And so we've asked, uh, Ms. Salane that she would serve as our representative to the Southwestern North Carolina Home Consortium Committee, and if you, you agree to serve in that capacity, we appreciate that. Mr. Tompa, there's a new, but he's anxious to learn and jump into the middle of things, and everything goes back to a policy of some kind, and so I've asked, uh, Mr. Tompa if he would be willing to serve as our, uh, one of our representatives on our local ordinance review committee. Mr. Tompa, is that okay with you?
Yes, sir.
And the town manager coordinates that, and she will, uh, be in touch with you to let you know the schedule and what the topics are to be considered and discussed, uh, before they're brought back to the board for review and approval, if approval is necessary. I've been serving as our representative on the Macon Program for Progress Board for the last couple of years, and I think it's good to move things around a little bit. So I've asked Vice Mayor Guffey if he would be willing to step into that role and represent us. Is that right? No, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong one. I'm Mr. Lewis, I mean, Macon Program for Progress Board. Mr. Lewis would step into that role and take that over, uh, in my place representing the board on the Macon Program for Progress. Mr. Lewis has been around so long, he knows everybody in every position and every agency in the county, and I think he'd do a good job for representing us, uh, with the MVP Board if he's willing to continue and will serve on that. I'll make the notifications, and I'm sure you'll be getting a welcome aboard letter soon. Thank you, Mr. Lewis, for doing that. And the other thing is, it's very important, we always talk about things, and it always comes down to economic development all the time, whether it's taxes or investments and so forth, and so Mr. Guffey has been around so long, and he dresses nice, too, and he would represent us on the Economic Development Commission if he's able to take that, uh, that responsibility. He also works with the state folks, and, uh, he's a, he's a successful businessman. He knows what economic development is. He has a good background in planning and thinking about the future and what the impacts of economic development are, and so I've asked him if he would serve as our liaison, our appointment to the Economic Development Commission for Macon County, and Mr. Guffey, I believe, has agreed to do that?
Yes, sir.
Well, I thank you all for agreeing to serve in these capacities. There may be some other opportunities come up from time to time. If they are, I'll be sure and let you know. I thank the board for their hard work and their willingness to take on additional responsibilities. And so the next thing is, uh, there's a meeting coming up, uh, April the twenty-third, twenty-fourth, and twenty-fifth in Winston-Salem at the Benton Convention Center, and it's called City Vision. It's, it's the annual meeting of the North Carolina League of Municipalities. We have, what, five hundred and twenty-seven municipalities or something like that now? And we have a really big turnout at those things, and so it would be good if you're able to make the time available to attend that annual meeting of the League of Municipalities in Winston-Salem on April the twenty-third or the twenty-fifth. Ms. Owens will be glad to take your name, make your reservations, and arrange for your transportation there if you're willing to go. I plan to be there.
And if I have to be there before the twentieth of February, it's a hundred and fifty dollars cheaper.
And I have room availability that otherwise may not be there.
Right. Yeah, yeah. But if, if you're going to make a decision quickly because those rooms fill up fast, otherwise you'll have to park somewhere else and drive to the convention center or walk four or five blocks to get there. So it's good, it's a good thing. You'll learn a lot. You meet folks from all over the state who are dealing with the same issues that you're dealing with on a daily basis, so I'd encourage you to contact Ms. Owens, let her know if you're able to attend.
Great city. Do your brothers still live down here?
Yeah. Old town, yeah.
Okay. At this time, I'd entertain a motion to go into closed session under North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven eighty-five to discuss acquisition of real property by purchase, option, exchange, or lease. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion, is there a second? Motion to second. Any discussion? Hearing on all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand.